All right, we're live. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Department Budget Hearings. Tonight, we will have one presentation from the Hartford Public Schools Board of Education. My name is Councilman Amilcar Hernandez, and I am Chair of the Operations Management and Budget and Government Accountability Committee. This meeting is broadcasting live on HPA TV's Xfinity Government Channel 96 and Frontier Government Channel 6032. It will also be streamed via hpatv.org and the HPA TV Facebook page and HPA TV, Apple TV, Amazon TV, and Roku TV apps. It will also be made available on the HPA TV YouTube channel. I would like to acknowledge everyone present here today. On the screen, we have Councilman George Meekton, to my left, Councilman Alex Thomas, Councilman Joan Gale, and to my right, Majority Leader Marilyn Rossetti. To begin the presentation, I'd like to introduce the Chair of the Hartford Board of Education, Jennifer Hockenhall, Chief Financial Officer of Hartford Public Schools, Kaylin Richard, and Superintendent and CEO of Hartford Public Schools, Dr. Leslie Torres Rodriguez. Dr. Torres Rodriguez, the floor is yours.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. I will begin tonight with the presentation of our proposed budget for fiscal year 2026 that our Board of Education voted on. I'll share the overall context about Hartford Public Schools' budget and our fiscal reality to ground the conversation, and then we'll go over the proposed budget, including revenue, expenses, and our approach to our mitigation. And finally, our chairperson, Hockenhall, will talk about a request from the Board of Education relative to increased resources. We've spent time engaging our community. Some of you know that we want to engage and inform our community and have our community be part of our budget development process. And so you see here, we've conducted over five months engagement with not just our board, community members, school and district leaders, city council members, legislators, in order to produce our budget. And though this process has allowed us to also engage in legislative advocacy and our deficit mitigation, and last week, as I mentioned, our board voted on the proposed budget that I will share with you tonight. We've been communicating since the onset, the story of our persistent structural deficit, which is driven by a combination of factors: flat revenue, rising costs, specifically in our special education tuition, transportation, and also our contractual obligations, our salaries. We truly have approached this process with two strategies in mind. One, prioritizing the resources in our budget that are most aligned with our strategic plan, and proposing reductions in other areas, right, outside of what we believe is essential, and also to engage in the legislative advocacy, not just at the local level, but at the state level as well. So the budget process this year happened within the backdrop of a few external reviews on our finances, and I just want to note that after a six-month review, Public Works is the name of the entity that was identified by the State Department of Education, they found no evidence of financial mismanagement. There was a time in which, you know, it was stated that Hartford Public Schools was sitting on, you know, $30 million, and we were not spending our money. And, you know, after the review, that was not the case, in fact. They could only identify $400,000 in savings. And as you will see in a few minutes, our deficit is a $30 million deficit. So that's a wide, wide gap from the efficiencies that they identified for us. And also, the Blue Ribbon Commission essentially had several recommendations, but they also found no evidence of, you know, financial mismanagement. And instead, they actually highlighted structural issues such as special education, tuition, and transportation costs that create this difficult dynamic for us. And for this reason, we have focused our legislative advocacy work to target these structural issues at the state level while, right, while also doing the difficult work that we have to do, which is trying to find reductions within the budget. So like I mentioned, we did start this process, and we were projecting a $30 million deficit based on our expenses increasing, you know, at a faster rate than the revenue that's coming in. The key expense drivers are special education tuition, transportation, specifically that door-to-door transportation for students that require, the students that are special education students, and then, of course, our salaries on our new contracts. Each of these categories, by the way, are expected to increase by at least $9 million next year. So we'll take a closer look at one of those cost drivers now, which is our contractual obligations. And while we are very excited about our new contracts for next year, because we know that it allows us, one, to compensate our staff, rightly so, but also it's just an added upper opportunity for us to recruit and retain the great educators that we have and our support professionals. And as we see on this slide, our new teacher contract increases salaries, you know, to have some parity with surrounding districts with significant increases for newly hired teachers. This costs about $6 million next year and an additional $19.6 million over three years. And we have recently settled our, you know, come to an agreement with our paraeducators, administrator secretaries, and our security officers. All, in all these cases, we have made an effort to improve our competitiveness in compensation, again, to increase the recruitment efforts, to improve our recruitment efforts and retention. And across all of the five contracts, the added cost of, to the system for the next year is 8.8 million. And we actually believe that this is a critical, important expenditure, but we see it also as an investment to ensure that we have not only excellent, but also stable staffing across all of our schools. So our new contracts also are key for us because of our vacancy rates, right? We know that we have a higher vacancy rate than we did pre-COVID, and so this is just an aerial view, if you will, of our areas. And want to point that we have high rates across all of our teacher, teaching roles, but specifically in our bilingual and special education positions. And again, we're hopeful that with our new contract, we'll be able to lower that vacancy rate and better support our students. Overall, our vacancy rate this year was about 12%. Next year, however, we are making an assumption to have half of that as the vacancy rate. So we're making an assumption and baking that into the budget design to have a vacancy rate of 6%. One other piece of context here is that we believe that we've done the hard work, not just us in, at the system, but also alongside all of your community. Back in 2018, we did, you know, make some difficult decisions relative to rightsizing and consolidating our schools, and so there was a consolidation of 12 facilities. So that was a reduction of 20% of our footprint. And implementing that just from the facilities, if you will, the savings, we were able to release $4 million from those 12 facilities. And, you know, the school consolidation overall, including that $4 million, saved $15 million over three years, right? So while we were able to have some savings, I just want to point out that it didn't really address the structural deficit that we have, that we had back then or that we still have today. Nonetheless, the consolidation did allow for an increase in what we call learning opportunities. And yes, it was also a disruptive process, but these are just some examples here of some of the things that we were able to invest in as a result of the consolidation and the efficiencies, if you will, right? Additional non-classroom time for our educators to plan together. We did not have what is called common planning time in the majority of our schools. We do now. Greater opportunities for health, wellness, and enrichment offerings in middle and high school. This is where we saw the commitment toward middle school sports across all of our schools. Extended day and year learning opportunities, this is made possible through our community school partnerships. Targeting small group size and intervention for students. Increasing resources and opportunities to earn credits for students or get back on track, that lived out through our student success and support centers. And then advisory time in the schedule for students to have opportunities to have trauma-informed restorative practice approaches to their social, emotional learning. And at the end of, at the end of the day, when all was said and done, you see there to the right of this slide, the reconfiguration, right? It was a three-year process that not only allowed for the consolidation, but it was really a system-wide, a significant undertaking that we did. And you see there all the shifts that happened across the entire district and our schools. Another important piece to all of this and why we engaged in the work that I just mentioned is our enrollment. This is a historical view of our enrollment decline. I've talked to you before some of the reasons for that. We know that birth rates, you know, have declined and are actually projected to continue to decline for a few years out. Also, not other people moving into, into the, into the city. And then also the school choice ecosystem that we have, right? Seats become open as part of the agreement, and we know that some of our neighborhood school students and families either choose magnet, magnet schools in Hartford, magnet schools operated by others, or open choice opportunities. And so this gives you a view as to where we've been and where, what we're projecting into next year, which you can see is also a projected decrease, again, of, you know, several hundred students. So that was a bit of the, of the historical context. And so just to give you a, an executive summary, the headlines, if you will, of our budget proposal, right? I mentioned that we started with that $30 million deficit. We've engaged in a lot of, you know, difficult deficit mitigation conversations, have been doing that alongside our board throughout the process. I think this is the, the year that we've had more board budget workshops and meetings than, than ever, at least during my tenure. And also parallel, the legislative advocacy. And based on the first round of reductions, we reduced 15.3 million of that 30. And I'll, we'll give you details about what those are in a minute. And we know that we're excited because we're going to receive an additional $3 million from the city. That's what we were, we were told already. So we've included all of that, and so that brings the mitigation from 30 to 18.3 million. And in, for fiscal year 25, some of you may remember that we did receive that one-time $5 million additional infusion from the state toward the end of the school year. We believe that it is reasonable and fiscally prudent assumption to think that next year, right, we, we would receive some similar amount from the state, especially based on the current legislative agenda. And so when we include that $5 million as a placeholder, then that leaves us with a 6.7, that left us with a 6.7 to mitigate. And so at the board meeting last week, while I had already identified areas to reduce for that 6.7, I was very explicit that those that had been identified were what we call high-risk reductions, given that they do impact programming. And so these items include some of the first things that if there were additional funding, we would be able to restore. And I'm going to tag in our CFO, CFO Richard, and then I'll be back.
Good evening. This slide here shows the specific reductions the superintendent just shared. What you can see is in that left column is the initial set of reductions, that total to that 15.3. So to talk through those, the first are around general education teachers. So about one teacher per school was reduced. I'll share with you in a few slides the exact number of teachers. Another move was around non-certified positions, so non-teaching positions at schools and also non-salary dollars at schools. The next line was around security guards. So not any security guards assigned to a specific school, but those that float across the district, those positions were eliminated. The magnet supplement, this was a piece that was historical of magnet schools receiving additional funding, and the plan had been to phase that out over time. So every year, it's been decreasing, and this is the final year of that funding. So that will be going away in its entirety for next year. I'm going to keep going with just the ones in that initial reduction, and then I'll speak to the high, high-risk ones. You can see for central office positions, that's about $4.3 million in district personnel. I will share with you the specifics on the number of roles and where those fall in a few slides, but that was an area we focused on to make sure we were making reductions further away from the schools when we were able to. We also reduced in non-personnel expenditures at the central office level. And then finally, we set a reduction target. So the superintendent mentioned one of our biggest cost drivers is door-to-door transportation for special education. So that is when a student is picked up, it's written into their individualized education plan, it's when they're picked up at their door and brought to the school. We wouldn't be taking that away from any students who need it or that is written in their IEP, but setting a target to really set up a process to monitor that. It costs about $13,000 per student, and we've seen it increase every year in that. So that's more a target for us to evaluate our own processes about how that gets assigned. So that was the first round of the 15.3 that we identified in reductions. The next round, we call high risk, just because it gets even closer to the student experience and are really important, important things for students, especially our highest need students. So you can see in that right-hand column is those high-risk reductions. That includes more advanced supports for our high school students. So things like our student support in success centers that support graduation for our high schools, Hope Academy that also provides some of those supports for high school students, as well as Opportunity Academy for students who are more disengaged from school. So those are some of our highest need high school student programming. It also includes contracts for both career pathways at the high school level and ninth grade academies to support ninth graders to transition into high school. It includes community partnerships, not in its entirety, but just those that are not funded through a grant currently. So anything we were funding through our general fund for community partnerships is decreased. It also includes assistant principal positions for schools, our smallest schools. So the five schools that have the lowest enrollment, it would be eliminating the assistant principal position. It included additional central office position reductions, specifically instructional coaches that work with teachers, and non-personnel specifically for building and grounds, so kind of maintaining our facilities. And then finally, it also included eliminating our dental clinic. So we still will have health clinics, but only those funded by state grant or insurance reimbursements. So that $1 million for the dental clinic, we don't receive any funding for and was coming out of our general fund. So those high-risk investments totaled to the 6.7, which gave us that total of 22 million in reductions that are now in the budget. This slide shows a bit of the journey we've been on in the budget process. You'll see the blue is revenue, the green is, is expense. The furthest left chart is the current year budget. So FY '25, that was adopted by our board, that was balanced with revenue and expense. What you will then see in the second chart is what we projected for next year. So we projected revenue would go up a bit, but that expense would go up even higher per the cost drivers that the superintendent talked through. That's where you see that $30 million gap that we initially projected. Through that initial set of work of, one, identifying additional revenue streams, so that includes additional money from the city, the assumption around the state, and including grant funds that hadn't previously been included, both on the revenue and expense side, plus the mitigations we just talked through, that's where we were able to land at the 6.7 gap. Then at our board meeting last Tuesday, as mentioned, the board voted to balance that budget, so we made an additional 6.7 of reductions, which is what I just talked through, so those higher-risk reductions. So now we sit at balance at that $452.1 million. To do a deeper dive on the revenue end, what you can see here is the top chart is last year's revenue or the current year's, the bottom chart is next year's projected revenue. You'll see that education cost sharing in City of Hartford pieces stay consistent. In state grants, this is where you'll see the final year of phasing in our ECS funding. So that, next year is the last year where the state is phasing that in. For us, it comes in the form of a grant, it's called the Alliance Grant, so that's where we get any additional ECS, that's included in that chunk, as well as increases to the excess cost grant, is what's making up that state grant portion of this. You can also see on the federal end, some increases there. That is our North Hartford Descents Pipeline Grant that comes through the federal government to support North Hartford schools specifically with some of their community partnerships. And that also includes some funding through title funding for our lowest-performing schools. You can then see, called out separately, there's the assumption of the state additional contribution for $5 million and the City of Hartford additional contribution at $3 million towards the end of that bar chart, with in the gradient then the request that you will be getting from the board in a few slides for the additional 6.7 million. So the request is to take us from the 452.1 to the 458.8, that would be represented by that 6.7. This is just some historical data on funding from the city to Hartford Public Schools. And what this looks at is per pupil funding adjusted for inflation. So the total amount has stayed the same. This accounts for the enrollment decline that the superintendent talked through, but then it applies the inflation adjustment, where you can see in, in real dollars, it's about $781 less per student, which is about $13 million less than the year prior to the pandemic. In other words, we can purchase $13 million less of goods, services, people than we were able to at that time solely based on inflation. So that's part of the ask as well for the additional dollars is to help get us back closer to what an inflation adjustment would look like. Turning to expenses now, this chart shows our budget broken down by categories of expense. So what you'll see here is the orange is fixed expenses, and that includes tuition, transportation, and utilities. You'll then see that dark green is school budgets, and then central office, services, supports, and administration is covered in those last three smaller sections. So what you see here is last year is on the left, next year is on the right. We're seeing an We're seeing an increase in those fixed expenses. So tuition is rising, transportation is rising, and that's shrinking the amount that is available for school budgets and central office budgets. So because we can't cut related to the fixed expenses, we've had to make the cuts in the areas of school and district office. This gives more detail on the specific staffing changes. And of course, if you have questions, there's even more detail underlying this. But as an overview to put some numbers to the dollars that I shared, at the central office level, and this is inclusive of the total $22 million and changes, there's 58 fewer positions at the central office. That represents a 16% reduction. So pretty significant reduction at that level. Like I mentioned, there's instructional coaches, the dental clinic is in there, other academics-related roles, some roles in dark operations team and top administration. So a lot of these were managerial roles. So that's about 58 roles at the central office. At the school side, it's about 56 roles. You can see that comes from about 48 in the general education teaching positions, about nine in the non-teaching school-based positions, and then pretty steady when it comes to district allocated positions to schools. So those are roles for special education, bilingual students, et cetera. And again, this is inclusive of that additional 6.7 million. So all in all, it's about 114 fewer positions. And I'll mention that school reduction is about 2%. So like I said, we tried when we could to decrease at the central office level so that we could prioritize resources to school sites. And I'll name, this actually doesn't include, this is the start of last year to proposed for next year and doesn't include the one-time funding we received from the state. So those went to fund school site positions, it was about $5 million funding 50 positions, and that's not included here. So the true loss that schools are experiencing is higher because that's not funding that we're guaranteed to have again. So I will name that, this is the adopted budget to the proposed budget for next year. And the superintendent will now give some historical context for these shifts.
I think this is a slide that some of you have seen. Every time I, I come, I add a column, just to kind of keep, keep me honest relative to the hard work that we've all had to do together, relative to mitigations, right? And so the cuts that CFO Richard was talking about, this kind of gives you an overview of where we've been. And so reductions are not new to, to us at Hartford Public Schools. And this kind of gives you a, a his, 11-year view of how the structural deficit has played out outside of when, right, we had the infusion of, of pandemic relief dollars. And so when we add in the additional 6.7 million in reductions, that means that Hartford Public Schools has had to reduce $200 million across the years, totaling 645 positions in the last 11 years. And so when we think about impact on staff, that means that our staffing over the years has fallen by 15% at central office by, by a third, so by 33%. And I mentioned a few slides before that Public Works, the technical assistance provider, identified by the state to do the, the inquiry into our, our financials, identified three positions, three or four, three? Three positions that we could reduce. And well, you know, we are at 58%, 58 positions reducing for, right, for next year. And if we go to the next slide, this is why we focus intently, not just internally at the, at the system, but also with our board and some of you, advocate, advocacy at the state level. We are, this is just an overview for you all and for the public to see our legislative areas of focus and the specific asks specifically relative to special education. You know, we spent a lot of time speaking to our, our delegation and others that are driving special education committees. Just this Monday, we were, you know, heavily advocating for HB 7277, which provides a grant for a, an additional weight, 50% weight for special education. Right? We're going to continue to do that work. Because if we go to the next slide, we come back to the additional reductions in order to balance the budget. And so any additional funding that is identified in a, in addition to the $3 million that was identified for Hartford Public Schools next year by the city, these are the programs and the resources that would be restored as we continue to receive funding. So again, we are currently experiencing a 12% vacancy rate. And so for us, one of the things that I'll highlight here is that we are not hoping to have a 12% vacancy rate next year. We're actually hoping to cut that by half. But even if it's by half, we're saying that the remainder of that, you know, will go toward the mitigation of the budget. So you see here that our proposal is to change the assumption from six, which is half of the current 12% to 5% and plan for, you know, filling additional vacancies. So this is going to put us in a more, you know, in a better place. But we're also mindful that our vacancy assumptions are baked into, into our budget. So that concludes the presentation on the budget. And I will now turn it over to our chairperson, Hocken Hall. As a, you know, last, at our budget approval board meeting, the board voted to amend our budget in order to balance it, which I had, I had come prepared to do that. And so that was totaling 6.7 million of high-risk reductions. And so through the amendment, the board, our chairperson is here to speak to that.
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening, council members. It's an honor to be here tonight. Thank you for having us here. And it's an honor to sit here before you as the Chair of the Board of Education. So thank you for, for everything. I just wanted to, to really emphasize the fact that the Board of Education has been incredibly involved in this process. We've been talking about this $30 million deficit since October, I think, October, November. So Dr. Torres Rodriguez has really been bringing us along this entire time. I mean, you can see how involved the board is. We have many of our members here in the audience today, knowing they, they're not here to speak, they're here to support. So we truly are a group of individuals that is very passionate about this budget, very passionate about the work that we do. And we are, you know, we're just here to share with you the budget that we have put together. We brought you a balanced budget, which did not come together lightly. We had a lot of very difficult conversations to get to this point. And we did put together a resolution, which we did hand out before the meeting tonight, so you have that before you. I would certainly encourage you to, if you, if you're interested, to go back and watch the last few meetings of the Board of Education. We have had, the conversations that we've had have been very public and have been recorded and are out on the internet to watch. So, you know, to watch those and just really see the passion behind how we came to this decision, I would just certainly encourage you to do that. I'd also like to thank Councilman Hernandez for being so involved this year with the Board of Education, you know, serving on the Blue Ribbon Commission and being on the Legislative and Advocacy Commission. Like, we're really, really grateful for you being willing to really walk beside us and do this work together, so thank you. And our work doesn't stop here. So just because we're here with our balanced budget for you tonight, we're still advocating. Many of us were at the Capitol at 9 o'clock on Monday night, testifying on the special education bill. We're still having our conversations with individuals, with our philanthropic partners, with our state leaders. So please know that while we are here saying, yes, we have a 6.7 million dollar gap that we would love assistance in filling, and perhaps that's also joining us at the state Capitol to have additional conversations. We are not done. And, you know, come June 30th, we hope to have figured out how we're going to solve this 6.7 million dollar gap, but we can't do it alone, and we are definitely not able to do it with what we have today. So I will not read out the resolution as you do have it, and it was up on the screen for others to read. But please know that we are incredibly passionate about what we do. We're here for our students. We all have students in our lives in some way, shape, or form, and anything that we can do to support them so that they can live their best lives, and we would greatly appreciate that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Torres Rodriguez. Thank you, CFO Richard, Kaylin, and thank you, Madam Chair, Hocken Hall, for this presentation, and thank you for all the information. I'm going to start, we're going to do one round of questions. I'm going to start on my left, on my screen. I failed earlier to recognize the presence of Councilwoman Rosado and Assistant Majority Leader T.J. Clark. And I'm going to start with them on the screen. So Councilwoman Rosado.
Mr. Chair, would I be able to do two questions since pressing for time?
Sure, yep.
Thank you. So first of all, I want to thank our superintendent for her commitment to the students of the City of Hartford and for her leadership. Since I've been on council, thank God, I've only had to have one superintendent present to us on our budget, and this is bittersweet for me, but I am excited for her new endeavor. And like I said, this will be her last budget in front of us. So someone has big shoes to fill. I also want to thank the Chair, Jennifer Hocken Hall. When I saw you, it gave me a flashback when you used to present in front of us as our CFO, and to the board for being present. With that said, my question, my first question, Dr. Leslie Torres Rodriguez, is last time you shared that student enrollment continues to go down, has that stabilized?
Yes, last time, every time I came, I showed enrollment projections and trends. And no, Slide 12 of your presentation shows the enrollment trend and, right? So it continues to, to decline. And I will point that, you know, as part of the chef agreement, there are additional allotments that will happen in the next couple of years. So we have to also keep that in, keep that in mind as well. But yet, no, it has not stabilized, to answer your question directly.
Thank you. My second question is, what about the enrollment in specific schools? How many schools would you say are under-enrolled? I believe last year you reported five of seven schools that were half-empty.
Yes, hang on, we can look at.
I think, and we can get more detail on this in terms of, there's different definitions of under enrollment. I will say, part of one of the reductions was, we have five schools that are under 250 students. So that's where we made reductions to the assistant principal role. So I would say definitely five schools being under 250 students, we would consider that a very small school. But we can provide additional data on enrollment as percent of building capacity and trends over time, school by school, if that would be helpful. But there's at least five that are under 250 students.
One other thing that I would, that I would add is, when, when we did the consolidation, the restructuring over the, the three years, as we right-sized and co-located schools, we did maximize some of the facility use. And as we built new schools, we've also built them smaller. So yes, we still have capacity in our schools and, you know, opportunity for further right-sizing. But I do want to mention that as we were updating our facilities and having new construction, we did think about making those smaller as well.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Assistant Majority Leader T.J. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening to all. Thank you, Dr. Torres Rodriguez, for your leadership during your tenure. Wish you much success in your next chapter. Thank you also to Chair Hocken Hall for your leadership and CFO. One burning question that I have is regarding the five schools that you mentioned that are 200 to 250 students as far as enrollment. If you were to propose a consolidation of those schools, such as what the closure consolidation plan took place a few years ago, and that equated to X amount of millions of dollars in savings, have you discussed with the board members as to what that looks like? And was that option floated?
No, we have not had conversations about which schools. I mean, we, we have an enrollment report that we can make visible, and it's probably in one of the dashboards that we have opened to the public. But no, we have not had the conversations yet. I do know that the board is in the process of revising the school closure or consolidation process. And so that is something that they are kind of gearing up for in terms of understanding what the policy says to then be able to think about what are the next steps and how that process should go.
But as a follow-up to that question, is that going to be done prior to June 30th?
Hi, Councilwoman Clark. It is currently in first or second reading in the Policy Committee, I can't remember. So it is being discussed, I believe it was discussed at the last policy meeting, and then it will be discussed further in the policy meeting in the coming weeks. I believe that that meeting is in two weeks. So the conversations are certainly ongoing at this time.
Okay, so when there's a, a final decision made, and if you have any financials that would go to support whatever the decision is, can you make sure that we on the council get that information?
If I could quickly clarify, we're currently just talking about the policy around the closures. Apparently, the last time, the last time there were school consolidations and closures, they started working on the policy while they were closing the school, like while they were doing the consolidation process. So they didn't quite update it. So I think the policy that we have before us is from maybe 2008, but then it's redlined as of 2017. So our goal is to have a policy in place that we can really lean on as we make, as we make decisions going forward. So this was step one in a very long process.
All right, so it doesn't appear that you probably will have this all situated by June 30th then?
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I have one more quick question.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Since our enrollment is down and money is going out the district, I know some of my colleagues have talked about this. Where is the board on filing a suit at the state regarding the Chef versus O'Neal? Because it has been disastrously impacting our education system and our enrollment.
At this point, there is no conversation that has happened relative to a suit or any type of injunction, which by the way, could not, want to clarify that it cannot, any injunction would not be made by Hartford Public Schools since we are not a party. But no, no conversations relative to Chef or the choice ecosystem that we, that we are part of.
So since Hartford Public Schools is not named in the suit, is it the city then that would have to file the injunction?
No, no, let me clarify. The question was relative to a, a suit. And so to answer that question specifically, no, no conversations have been had to that end. My reference to an injunction, because I, that would be, I guess, another way for Hartford Public Schools to be, to be like in the mix of the decision-making because we're not a party in the suit, that would possibly require an injunction. And so no conversations have been had around an injunction either.
Okay. I, I would just suggest as a recommendation that those conversations be had. I know, Dr. Torres Rodriguez, you're on your way out, but maybe this will be falling to hands with Board Chair Hocken Hall. But I think some serious conversations have to be discussed regarding the impact of this lawsuit and seeing how our enrollment is declining at a fast rate, that it is affecting our, the way that the operations are financially for the school district. So I'll just leave that in yours hands to discuss. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Mitchdom.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you all for the presentation and also all the work that went into it, the long, hard. Thank you, members of the board, for putting your hearts into it. I have a question, and... I have a question, and forgive me, Dr. Torres, if, because I was coming from the car to here and I was off the feed for a minute, if you said this. Is this our 12th flat-funded year, this will be?
11 years?
Right, I guess, so this, this will be year 11.
Yes.
Okay. And I want to talk a little bit about mitigation, both in detail and in concept. Mitigation is just saying, we need this money and then, but we don't get it, so we're gonna make a budget that doesn't have it, right? That's what it means to mitigate the budget.
To put another way, it means that if the money does not, if we don't have the revenue, these are the things that will not exist next year.
Right. So, this year, the, the deficit was 30 million, the city put up 3, and so then you mitigated 15 some? Right?
22, yeah.
Thank you. Okay. And, but that's not, that doesn't mean that what you need this year is actually just another 6.7 million. It means that what you need is another 22, but you're not gonna get it, more or less, right, when we talk about that mitigation? Last year, how much was mitigated? It was like 24?
No. Oh, then, let me, let me go back to that.
Ballpark, I'm just trying to get a sense of year to year.
So, it was a $40 million mitigation.
Last year.
So, 24, I guess, let me go post-COVID, right? So, 24 was 10 million, 25 was 40, and then 26, we're looking at 30.
How much have we mitigated over the course of these 11 flat-funded years, roughly?
That's the $200 million.
Okay. And that's not, so that's money that, it's not like we're mitigating the same money. Like, our budget should really be, if we're talking about needs, 200 million more than it is right now.
Over, over the course of, of time, it's, you know, I call it up anywhere from a 20 to 30 million dollar gap every year, at least during my tenure.
Okay. And, yeah, I'm just trying to get some context, that we're not just talking about 6.7 million, we're talking about an easy 30 every year, give or take. And, and I want to ask a little bit about that 6.7 million. Just, it's helpful to know details, right? When you're talking about assistant principals, that was one thing that was like in that core, we don't want to get rid of assistant principals. I've worked in schools a lot in my day job, and I understand that assistant principals, for example, if there's a child who has an urgent behavior problem or an attendance problem, those are the people who will connect with the, the family and try to figure out how can we get this kid on track. So, if we don't have as many, or if we don't have any, what's the practical import to the family whose child is not attending school or is struggling? What does that mean for that family?
Yeah, as it relates to the assistant principal, and to give context, that was actually one of the earlier decisions that the Board made outside of the high-risk reduction items. And there was conversation about the other resources that are in the school that could potentially support, up to the example that you're saying. While I know that there, there would be an impact, there are also in schools, the behavior technicians, the family and community support providers, which the Board actually also requested that there be at least a .5 across all of our schools to be able to support with, you know, that liaising back and forth between the family and the school. So, those would be some potential other ways, not taking away from the lack of, that there will be an impact, but also saying that there are other potential ways that schools can leverage their, their already limited resources.
I mean, that's the point I make, it's like, it's fewer people to do the same work. So, it's, every family is more likely to wait longer, each child is more likely to be in crisis longer, fair to say.
Yes, I think that's where, right, the, the question about like the economies of scale, like we have to think about that, right? When you have smaller schools, these challenges become even more, right, create more tension because the need doesn't, doesn't disappear from a school that has less kids. They still have the need to call the parent, to manage the behavior, to help a student, you know, de-escalate or, you know, kind of regulate. So, it becomes really challenging when the schools are smaller to keep the same level of staffing that other schools, right, that have that economy of scale.
And, and I just want to, I want to come back related to that question of school closures, because Councilwoman Clark brought it up. And I think you did mention this, but sort of to make it clear, when you did the round of school closures, however many years ago that was, the total savings was what, 11 million dollars?
Well, it was, we, we used two numbers, but the overall number was 15 million over three years, and 11 million went toward reinvestment in programming and opportunities for students. And then 4 million from facility savings, right? The fact that we don't have the paylights, we don't have to meet at the heating, all those things.
But just, I asked for context because every year, we have 20 to 30 million dollars in deficits, and if once in a decade, we can save 11 million, we're not really, we're not solving our problem.
Right, it doesn't solve the, the structural issue. I think what, what I think is worth looking at it from an immediacy perspective, which is what you're saying, right, it's not gonna get to the 30, 20 or 30 million dollars. And you also have to look at it holistically because taking those 12 facilities offline, those facilities would have required upkeep, they would have required at some point either a new construction or renovation, right? And so, those are things that I think also have to be kept in, in mind toward the longer term implications. So, those costs, right, came off, and the city doesn't have to, right, you don't have CIP costs, nor, nor does the state have school construction. But as it relates to programming, which is what you're saying, no, it doesn't address the entire situation that we're having, but the tension is still real in that it's really hard to staff smaller schools when there's such concentration of need. So, that's, that's where the, the rub is.
Just a last question, and maybe it's too open-ended, but how much longer can we sustain this for?
Look, I, I, I can probably dig up the PowerPoint and the presentation that I made on that January 6th day to, to the then Board of Education when I said that, right, they had taken the vote, we were gonna begin to work with community to begin the first round of schools, and I was very explicit that we would be in this situation yet again five years from then, right? So, I was very clear that in 2021, 2022, conversations with community would have to start again relative to the next part. Because when we consolidated, we only looked at, and rightly so, Hartford Public Schools. And we exist within this broader system of choice. And so, the reason why those conversations did not happen, right, was because we had a pandemic in the middle of all of that. So, to your point, it is not sustainable. It is not sustainable, or we, we are where we are, which is now we are actually reducing the very programs that were possible as a result of what the savings were from the first consolidation process. Those are things, those 6.7 million dollar items, those were programs and designs that while it wasn't explicit that the community said, we want Hope Academy, but the community did say, and our data showed that we needed tiered supports and programs for students, that we needed programs like OPP, for example, right, for those top three, tiered three, ooh, almost tier four students. So, to your point, not sustainable, those are not sustainable. They were possible as a result of the consolidation. No, no longer viable.
Thank you.
Councilman Thomas.
First and foremost, I just want to say thank you to the entire Board and all of the staff of Hartford Public Schools, and then of course, to you, Superintendent Torres. I appreciate all the work that you've done in your tenure, and as all of my council colleagues have said, and I'm sure all the other ones will say as well, we wish you the best in your future endeavors. To your last statement, you know, in response to Councilman Mitchdom's point, I think it just brings up to the attention to like, to Councilman Clark's last questions, to where, you know, having conversations about what the next consolidation plan looks like, you know, is very, you know, very important. But then also conversations around, you know, you know, Chef are important as well because, you know, if this is not sustainable, you know, that's, it's just not sustainable. I did have a question, well, a few questions, and I'm sorry about that, but a few questions. But the magnets supplement, at its height, what, what was the amount? Do you know off the top? Sorry.
Yeah, I think at one point, we started with like $1,000 of a difference. When we first, I also wanted to just take this opportunity to say that school consolidation was not only about facilities, it was really about reshaping, reimagining the entire system, not just the pathways, but also how we were funding, how our budget formula was allocating resources. And so, one of the things we did was identify the disparities between funding at the, at the district level for schools. And so, our data showed that there was a gap in funding between some magnets and some neighborhood schools of 1,100 per kid. And so, we thought we need to level it a little bit. And so, that began the phase, the phased-down approach from $1,000, I believe, down to by half, I think by 750, then by 500, then we left it at 250. And then, this is where we are, where like, we were supposed to be there three, four years ago, but COVID in the middle of everything, and so that's where we are.
Got it. Thank you. My next question is around, so the 6.7 million dollars that's needed, does that amount change in any way if the state's, like 5 million dollars, like, does not come through, or, you know, like, how? Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
That, we have baked-in assumptions.
Exactly.
And so, yeah, just add to the 6.7.
Got it. Okay. Got it. And then, I think my last question, well, last question, but not really a question, more of a statement, it, it's just very, it's, it's sad for me and like disheartening, I'm sure for, you know, you guys and, you know, teachers and everyone that cares about Hartford Public Schools, that, like, some of these things that we recognize as highlights and things that like, you know, are, are amazing things that are happening at Hartford Public Schools are things that are on this list to be cut. You know, when I first, you know, came on, you know, the City Council and, you know, got a chance to meet with you and talk to you about some of the great things that were happening, these were the things that you mentioned. And now, we're, you know, talking about taking them away, and that, and that's sad, and that's not, not fair, you know, for our kids. And so, you know, I, so, you know, I hope we can do what we, you know, I hope we can make this work and figure, figure this out, and just appreciate you so much. Thank you.
Councilman Gill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, everyone. Looking at your presentation, the, the bar, the page with the bar charts here, I want to kind of walk through, we had fiscal year '25 where you, you had adopted budget 429, and then you go to fiscal year '26, and the indication is to, and I take it this means to keep the same level of service, the cost was gonna be 468. So, that's by my math, a $39 million increase. And so, what I'm interested in learning, and I think it's important for council folks to know this, what are the drivers of that 39 million? Now, we know that you spoke about a new contract for the teachers, for PARAs and, and some of the other unions, I think. So, first off, could you tell me what the cost, you know, how much of that 39 million is increased salaries?
That's about 9 million of that is the increases to salaries in the contracts.
And then, you did mention that there was gonna be some increases in transportation.
Yes.
So, how much of that 39 million is transportation?
It's roughly 9 million as well. And again, largely that special education transportation.
And then, you did mention special education as a, as another area. Now, you know, when you, when you tell me the increase in special education, I assume you're factoring out the transportation part of it, and you're factoring out the increased salaries part of it. So, what's the other increase in special education?
So, it's also baked into tuition. So, I would say that that's actually the other big category where I act, that is projected to increase by closer to 15 million, just in tuition alone. I can get the exact number, but that's predominantly special education. And so, we actually aren't separating out special education from those categories I named, it's included in the salaries in the transportation and in the tuition, but it's the main driver of the tuition piece and of the transportation piece, if that makes sense.
It, I'm sorry, it, it doesn't make sense to me, so try me again.
Okay. So, special, so in that category of tuition increasing by 15 million, the majority of that 15 million increase is in special education tuition. Similarly, in that 9 million increase for transportation, the majority of that is special education. I could break out for you specifically what those costs are, I don't have it right now, but I could get that for you.
I, I will just add that among those three, right, is that increase that you're, that you're, that you're looking at in that bar?
Yep, plus just general.
Well, I'm, I'm just trying to confirm that these are, they're independent increases, that we're not overlapping.
No, those are all independent, but special education cuts across them, if that makes sense.
Got that. And so, 15, 9, and 9, that's a total of 33 million. There's 39 million dollar difference, what's the other 6 million?
So, some of that is just general inflation. Part of it was utilities, was about 3 million more than we anticipated, so that was the biggest category of that other piece. And the rest was just inflation and different contracts and services that we have.
So, understanding from these numbers that you've given us, that the special education numbers are the bulk of this, right? 15 and 9, 24 million, not all of it, special ed, but a lot of it.
Yes.
Special ed. And I know last year, when you gave us this presentation, the presentation focused very heavily on the special education, you gave us a lot more figures, a lot more data on what the, what the costs of the system, and that's good. And I would encourage in future budgets that we do get those breakdowns and that we do get the breakdowns on transportation, because last year, we also got much more detail as to what it's costing. And it's helpful for us as council people to see what the drivers are so that we can turn around and advocate, I mean, forget about whatever money we can find, but we also can advocate with the state and with other folks to change some of these things around. And there is advocacy that's taking place right now, very specifically with the special education budget. And my understanding is that the legislature is considering and may have included it in the package that was delivered yesterday or so, some increase in these dollars. What is your understanding of what the City of Hartford may get for increased special education funding if the legislative package does pass?
Yes, and we can definitely send you more detail on special education. We have a fact sheet we've been sharing with folks who have been advocating so that we're aligned on the numbers, so we can definitely get that to you. In terms of the potential at the legislative level, part of the discussion that I believe was happening yesterday was around the excess cost grant. So, excess cost is the only funding we get for special education right now, and that is currently about 12 million dollars for this year. There was a proposal to increase that by 40 million across the state. That translates to only 1.3 million for us. However, part of the discussion that's been happening is fully funding that grant. So, what the state does is they provide funding when a student costs four and a half times the average per pupil. And for us, those are all students who don't attend Hartford Public Schools, so they're Hartford residents who are attending other schools, but they have never funded that grant fully. So, they only provide us 78% of what that grant should allocate. Part of the discussion is the state fully funding that grant, so moving from 78% funding to 100%, which would be about 4 to 5 million more dollars for us. So, that is one option. Another option is the bill, 7277 House Bill, that we were advocating for on Monday, that is adding a weight to the funding formula for special education. So, Connecticut is one of two states that, in the country, that doesn't have a weight for special education in the formula. And so, that, adding a 50% weight would be 16 million dollars. And so, that, adding a fifty percent weight would be sixteen million dollars for us. We're not sure if that actually would happen, that's a large ticket, obviously, across the state, but that bill is proposing a fifty percent weight. It would be given in a grant format, so not through the state funding formula, but it would be equivalent to that amount of money. So those are the two biggest avenues right now.
And those monies that we're talking about are separate and apart from that five million dollars that you built in to this budget that you're expecting from the state?
Uh, no, those are actually based on monitoring that legislative agenda and understanding that one proposal is about four to five million, the other is sixteen million, and so we're making a conservative estimate out of those, of what we think might happen next year.
I see. So that five million included the most conservative estimate of what you might?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Again, I can't stress with you how impactful last year's presentation was for me, and you, you just mentioned it again, this cost-sharing formula that doesn't kick in until the city of Hartford has paid four and a half times the cost of a student.
Four and a half times the average, yes.
Which, as I recall, last year was a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's about that.
Per student. And then I asked how many students we had that we were paying a hundred thousand dollars for. Do you remember, what's the number?
Yeah, I can find it.
We do have about three hundred students that we outplace?
Yeah, so it's definitely, those students that get private placement is often where that falls, which is about three hundred students.
Yeah, those are dramatic numbers that the public needs to know, and needs to be pounded into the public at all times, it seems to me, because of the just total unfairness that the city of Hartford and the rest, you know, the, the regular kids that have an opportunity to learn are getting, you know, suffering from a lack of educational dollars, because we have to spend so much money on so few kids.
Yeah, three hundred and four is the number of students.
Three hundred and four kids for whom we're paying a hundred thousand dollars a kid.
Or more.
And three hundred and four times a hundred thousand, my HPHS math tells me that's thirty million dollars.
And we're only get for the amount above that a hundred thousand, just to be clear. We pay for everything up until that.
Thirty million dollars for three hundred and four kids in special education.
And the state only gives us twelve million for funding that.
I want to also clarify that we are also responsible for paying for students that are outplaced by other providers.
Explain that.
So, if a student is attending a magnet school operated by someone else.
A student meaning somebody who lives in Hartford?
A resident, yes.
A resident of Hartford?
Yes. Is attending a school at Goodwin, operated by Goodwin, then they're outplaced and the bill is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a year, it is our responsibility, right? Every Hartford resident student.
Yeah, so, I mean, these are just inequities that, that, they're, they're just appalling. They're absolutely appalling. Next question for you. This graph, you gave us in your presentation, this graph, which showed purportedly the cost per pupil, or spending per pupil.
Yes.
But, again, using my HPHS math, a problem arises in that the city's budget has flat-funded you with two hundred and eighty-four million dollars, but the number of students during that time has gone from twenty thousand, almost twenty-one thousand students, down to sixteen-five. So, if I divide two hundred and eighty-four million dollars by the number of students, I get that in fiscal year sixteen, we were spending thirteen thousand five hundred per student, and today, we are spending seventeen thousand two hundred dollars per student. That's actually not quite a four thousand dollar increase per student. Now, that's dividing the total sum of the amount of money you're getting from the city by the students. I know you have an explanation, but I'm, I'm telling you this because I'm telling you that members of the public in our simplicity are going to look at these things and say, what's the problem here? They've got four thousand dollars more per student than they had in twenty sixteen. Go.
I was just going to say, I wanted to clarify, the city part is the ninety-six million, so that's why you see the overall, closer to six thousand per student here. And so, that's where that number comes from, so the city contribution is ninety-six million. And so, what we're showing, so you're going back to twenty sixteen in what you were doing? So part of what we're looking at?
I did, only because that's the first year I was on council.
Okay, got it, got it. So we were looking a little later on, so to FY twenty, and so that is where the difference comes, it's the ninety-six million divided by the number of students, looking at FY twenty compared to FY twenty-six. And then, it does have that inflation adjustment in there, so it's saying, what were these, if we look at this year, what was that same amount of money worth back then? So it's factoring in the inflation adjustment to say, how much were those dollars actually worth at that time? And we know, because inflation has increased especially since twenty twenty, that's what's playing a factor in some of those numbers, because it's adjusted for that Consumer Price Index, or the Inflation Index. So it's doing a few things, it's starting.
So my mistake, though, is in using a two hundred and eighty-four million dollar number.
Correct. Use ninety-six, and then, we were looking at FY twenty, but your math is right then, if you do it for sixteen. We could look further back.
So the two hundred and eighty-four hasn't been flat-funded for the last ten years?
Well, that part, so the other portion of that is the state ECS funding, and so that part has also been flat as well. So, but again, we've looked at that at the state level, so you could say the two eighty-four has been flat, that's the state contribution plus the city contribution, just in the education cost-sharing. It has, that has been flat over time, enrollment has been going down, but inflation has been going up faster than enrollment has been going down. I think that's the main story.
I just want to say, and?
I think you need to make the case, I think you need to make the case better on that. So I would encourage working on, on making that case better.
And the concentration of need continues to deepen and widen. Like, I think that's the other piece that we have to think about here.
And I will say, any increases to state funding, like I mentioned, come in that Alliance grant, so that's in a separate section of the budget. But they haven't changed that part, you'll see in that two eighty-four.
Yeah, but I'm right, the two eighty-four hasn't changed in ten years.
Right, yes, that part is right.
And so, my, my math per student is the correct number per student?
Yep.
And it, so, okay.
Councilwoman Rosetti.
Well, first of all, thank you. I always say this, and this year even more, as a daughter of a teacher, I'm sorry, I'm getting upset, my mom passed away last year, as a daughter of a teacher who loved her work, I thank you, Superintendent, I thank you, Chair, I thank the board. Enough of that. Okay. So, help me understand a couple of things. And, in the future, put page numbers on the thing. So on the purple one, the one that says initial reductions, high, high-risk reductions, you know, you know what one I mean?
Slide fifteen.
Slide fifteen. Are they on there?
No, that was me.
Oh, okay. So on slide fifteen, you go over high-risk reductions, then on yellow slide, I don't know what slide that is, restored funding, it's a couple after that?
Yes.
Which both come to six point seven, but where is the dental clinic in restored funding? Is it in the last one, or under two point seven, or are you not putting it back?
We are only keeping the dental clinics that are funded through grants.
So that's?
So we're going to still keep that, it's just not part of the restoration for us to pay for that million dollar difference from our budget.
So, if the six point seven happens, it's not getting restored?
That, that portion of it. We will still have some, but the portion that we were paying for, it is not being restored. If we get more than six point seven million dollars, that's a different conversation.
Okay, I still don't understand then, because there's one million, it comes to six point seven, then there's six point seven, that doesn't include the one million, so what one million is added to that six point seven?
So the difference, and so we took the highest priority things that we did away with and added them back, the difference is that vacancy assumption. So this was a slightly different approach.
So it's not the exact apples for apples?
It is not exact apples for apples.
Okay, that's the answer. Thank you, thank you, thank you. With that said, what do the dental, what does the one million dollar dental clinic entail? How often is it done? What students do you see? And what kind of detriment will that be to oral health?
It'll, we still will have our dental clinics, it'll just be less staffing, and so, at times, it'll be less services and/or a reduced amount of, like, the, the wait time for students might have to be delayed.
Will there be any students that won't be served?
They will get served, it's just that it might take a little longer.
Okay.
If they want to be served at our schools.
Yep. Another thing to help me understand that the CFO said, you talked about, this is in the reduction target for special education door-to-door transportation, it's two million, and you said it's about thirteen thousand a piece, which comes to about a hundred and fifty-three thou, three, a hundred and fifty-three special ed students, but we have way more than that, so this is your assumption. How many special ed students do we have?
Thirty-four hundred, about.
Thirty-four hundred?
Yes.
So where did we, how do you come up with that assumption, just?
It was part of meeting with our special education team to understand the trends over time in door-to-door transportation, and what they thought might be a realistic target if we updated some of the processes. Because this also covers students not just who go to Hartford Public Schools, but who attend schools outside.
Yep. Now, I just want to make a, an overall statement that I'm preaching to the choir, but I wish other people would hear. As a city who serves our homeless, hosts parades, has fire and police ready at will for our visitors, tries to have safe streets, and people want to enjoy that and come into our city when they want to, I wish they would embrace our children in the same way, and I wish the state would realize what, and, and it's going to be hugely unpopular outside of this, probably this room in the city, they, they owe us that. As the governor, and I applaud him for saying, you know, they wouldn't, you know, with the federal government and DEI, I wish they would react as quickly to the needs of our students. I wish they would see that those needs are just as desperate. And that, I know that doesn't address what we're going to do as a council, but I know people think we ask and ask and ask, but we give also as a city. And I know, again, I'm preaching to the choir, but I wish, I wish others would hear, hear that and, and have the compassion to understand what you can change in a student's life if you start from the beginning. So, that's all, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Well, it's really hard to follow that, and I, I didn't, I didn't have any plans to ask any questions, and that's why I skipped myself and went to Mary Rosetti, but, but now I'm going to mess up that ending, because I do have a question now. And, so, on, on that, I, I did notice on that restored funding of six point seven, that it's not apples to apples. I'm very familiar with the original six point seven reduction, but then this restored funding, this one is a new slide for me, or a new information for me. And I did see that four items do come from the original six point seven, the other three items come from potentially other reduction phases earlier in the process, and one of them is not part of that, because the, the vacancy, six point six percent to five percent, that's not, that's not part of any reduction, that's just more of a wish list, like, you know, we could, you know, if there are, the applications are there, and the teachers are there knocking on our door, we will definitely take them if we have the, the additional funding. But that one, it's very up in the air. I mean, we, this is a very aggressive vacancy rate that you are proposing, based on the new contract. This year, we are at an eleven percent vacancy, right? So this is very aggressive, a six percent, but totally doable with the new contract, it is very attractive, and, and hopefully, you know, it, it does come true, because our kids need, our children need, need more resources, not less. But, the reality is also that if you do not have, if you end up with a seven percent vacancy, eight percent vacancy, each percentage is about two to three million dollars each percentage of vacancy, depending on the position, so, so there's also some opportunities there, but you won't know that until much later in the process. It is also true that the process of approving these budgets, it's, to me, it's kind of backwards, in the sense that, you know, the board approves their budget in April, city approves it in May, and the state approves it in June. And I wish it was all the way around, I wish it was the state first, then the city, then you guys, because we will have more information and more specific data. Right now, we are in assumptions that only the state will provide five million dollars across these bills. My hope is that is, my hope is that it will be a little bit more than that, but that's just hope. You know, there's no tangible information to, to back that up. But that's the hope, and that's the advocacy, that's what a lot of people are trying to push for. When, when I, when I look at those, you know, the, what is it, the SB fifteen-eleven, which was one of the earlier ones, HB seventy-two-seventy-seven, which is the more recent one, along with SB fifteen-sixty-one, is the SB fifteen-sixty-one and HB seventy-two-seventy-seven very similar? Are they the same? I, I haven't been able to, are, are they, because I, I was confused with the Senate bill and the House bill, they come out at the, almost the same time, and I wasn't sure.
I would have to dig back in and see, I know that there was one that was focused on the weight, which we're focused on, the other one was focused on special education, like, grants to do in-house, in-district programming, and so I'll get back to you as to where those are within the continuum, if they haven't, you know, merged or folded already.
But those are the three that do have financial impact. There are some other ones that are stories, and some other ones that are, but they are not necessarily going to have a financial impact, and, and I read some of those, but they're good, they're, I'm saying they're bad, but they just don't have a financial impact, and, and that's what we're trying to deal with at this, at this juncture. So, the, this slide that's towards the end about the restored funding, are they, were they shown in a specific order of how you would restore these services in that particular order, or they were just randomly there and not necessarily in order? Because in previous versions of your deficit, you did put high-risk, middle, and, you know, I'm sorry, that was the board that decided, you know, the, the levels of. But on this one, it would be helpful to understand whether those services that you will be restoring if you do get six point seven million dollars, wherever, wherever the money comes from, if it's in that particular order that you will be addressing these?
Yes, for the most part, it is. You know, this is based on the board's ranking process, where, right, student supports, those tier-two interventions, followed by our community schools, wraparound support services. What you see there, it's pretty much in the order in which it was ranked by, by our board. And, and the vacancy assumption, right, that one is, as, we have to kind of set that aside?
I, I was about to do that. So, so if we set that one aside?
Yes.
And, and even the coaching one, the, the point-five coaching one?
I know.
If we put those two aside, I mean, I say the coaching one, because that was not, that was decided even before the six point seven, that was decided in the initial reduction phase. So if we put those two aside, the other ones above, with the exception of the North Hartford Ascend Pipeline, that, you know, that portion, that, to cover the, the rest of it, are part of that six point seven million dollars that were recently, you know, removed from the budget. If we put those two aside, that would be three point two, so, if you do get three point five and not six point seven, let's just say that you get three point five, you will be able to restore anything that has to do with direct student services. And, and I'm not saying that the last two are not important, because they, they are teachers, and, and, you know, where these are positions that will serve students, but in a situation where if you are facing, you know, you have to face some decision-making, and you don't get six point seven, you get three point five, you'll be able to restore, you know, the first five items, because that's why I asked... items, because that's why I asked the question about the order. And those five are definitely services that are directly to the students as opposed to positions, you know, that don't necessarily serve the students directly, with the exception of the teachers. But again, that's a very, you know, aggressive hope, which I'm saying I support and I hope that we actually do get to that point. So I just wanted to understand then. Just in future conversation, you will help me understand the ecosystem and how the decision-making, how you would go about that decision-making.
Yes.
So whether, you know, I can support and advocate for one or the other. My last question, and this is a very basic question, but it's so confusing for me. ECS is based on enrollment, correct?
Based on Hartford resident students.
Hartford residency.
Hartford resident students.
Yes.
So how come ECS has been flat?
So that's the clarification. The formal ECS that comes from the state has been flat, but the increases that have happened over time, they've been phasing in with next year being the last year, comes through the Alliance Grant. And so we receive that funding from the state in a grant format. So we are still getting that state funding, but we have to actually submit a grant application with what exactly we will be doing with it.
But we have less students? Or you said residents?
Residents.
That's the question, residents.
Yep.
So, okay, so then the question is, in the last 10 years, do we have more student residents of Hartford?
I don't believe so, no. Because I think that's part of what the enrollment decline is then. Not all of it, but is just birth rates decreasing and residency status decreasing? And then part of it is then out of the residence, because we're fiscally responsible for all Hartford resident students. That's where the tuition comes from. But, so both Hartford residency and then Hartford Public School enrollment have been declining.
So you understand my confusion now? If we believe that we have less Hartford resident students compared to 10 years ago, how the ECS hasn't changed, whatever increases we've gotten, we've gone through the Alliance part of it, and I still don't understand how that formula works because there's something in that equation that's missing for me.
So they're increasing the amount they're funding per pupil at the state level? So there's a base that's set...
Through the Alliance, not through the ECS.
Correct, exactly. It's going to the, any increase we get goes to the Alliance Grant.
So we're still on the foundational base of 11,525?
Yes, correct.
Since it was created?
Correct. And they've been phasing in funding for that over time and the increases to that go to the Alliance Grant.
Okay.
It was not fully funded at the start.
Okay. Last question. You have your numbers through March already, your financials through March, I assume. Is your operating result on your PNL, is your operating result positive or negative through March?
The what?
Your operating result, your...
Oh, for the current fiscal year?
Yeah.
Yes, we believe we're going to be balanced for the current fiscal year.
Balanced?
Mm-hmm, about even.
Through June?
Yes. Based on our end-of-year projection, which we use to inform some of the projections for next year as well.
Okay. So you've already taken into account those bills from special ed from other, outside of district, you've already taken into account, you're hoping that you don't get more than what you're expecting?
Correct.
And, because those are ridiculous invoices?
They are. We are monitoring on a daily basis, honestly, but yes, as of now, we're expecting...
Are any of the bills in the state addressing the ridiculousness, if that's even a word, how ridiculous those bills are as far as any organization just charging whatever they feel like they want to charge without having to prove it, without having to have any sort of backup documentation to show that that is the cost of serving our students?
That is part of the bill. I'm pretty sure it's of the House Bill 7277 we've spoken to and was part of the advocacy. It's not just increasing funding, but it's regulating the private providers. And we've actually provided some data about what we get charged, and the goal is to compare that to other districts and understand if there's inconsistencies across that. So that is actually part of the bill, some regulating of costs on the end of the private providers.
Okay. Thank you. We have one last burning question from Counselwoman McGill.
Oh, Counsel... I wanted to talk a little bit about other ways of achieving savings. And we had a discussion last night with our DPW and Capital Improvements Budget Staff about school construction, school, new school construction. And one of the schools that came up was the Wish School, which is, doesn't exist anymore. I drove by on Barber Street, it's completely gone. But I asked the question as to whether the city of Hartford had the ability to just pull out of reconstruction of that school. Could we just stop right now without suffering any lawsuits or whatever? And the answer was we could, that the city could just stop. They didn't advise it. They thought that if you decided that later on you wanted to build that school, all the assumptions that were built into these current contracts, of course, would change and materials would change, labor costs would change, et cetera. But apparently we could just stop right now and not rebuild the Wish School. You mentioned earlier that we have five schools that are under 250 students per school. I don't know if this is something that's been thought of as a possible savings of simply not rebuilding the Wish School. On the city side, that would, that ends up freeing up some capital dollars that we know other departments would like, because you're not the only department that's coming to us saying they need more money. Everybody would like more money. We've got, DPW talked last night about having vehicles that were on average 18 years old and beyond all of their useful life expectancy. But the other thing that was mentioned at the same time was consolidating operations, specifically, it was a conversation with DPW, so it was a conversation of consolidating maintenance of school buildings. And whether having all the school facilities under one umbrella would achieve any savings, was it worth anything? So I'm just wondering if either of those two concepts have been thought about, and if so, what the reaction is.
We haven't had deep conversations, but I think, you know, it is an opportunity to do a study, to see what, you know, efficiencies can be had, actually.
Any conversations about not opening, reopening Wish?
No conversations relative to Wish. I'm actually looking at their enrollment, and they're not one of the schools that are under 250 students. But no, there are, there were conversations relative to other schools that are on the list, schools like Parkville, Sanchez, that, you know, we are wondering, the state really is wondering about whether or not, you know, it is something that should be kept on in terms of the sequencing.
Thank you.
Counselwoman McShale.
Thank you. Dr. Torres, I think it was when Counselwoman McGill was asking questions before about enrollment, you mentioned that the enrollment is down, but the concentration of need is up. And I think I understand what you mean, so I'm just going to see if I do, and you can tell me if I'm right or wrong. But my understanding of our, you know, the way our ecosystem works where we have choice and we have crack and we have magnets, is that, and one, I know as a parent, it takes a certain amount of organization and focus and like access to the internet to do the whole lottery process, to get through it, right? And the follow-through that is involved. I also know as a lawyer who represent kids in schools that those other placements that are not Hartford Public Schools have a variety of ways that they put up barriers to kids with special needs and also ease those kids out, especially if they have behavioral problems, right? Because kids who are facing an expulsion for a behavioral problem, instead of having that struggle, they go back to your district, right? There's all those ways. So what happens, if I understand what you say concentration of need, is that it's not just that, the ecosystem doesn't draw democratically from our population. It draws the more privileged out and leaves the less privileged in and the most needy. So that, when you say concentration of need, that's what we're talking about?
That is an example of what is, what I'm saying. And it shows in the number of students that we have that are special education students, 21%, 3,400 to the question before, 26% multilingual learners, right? In just one year, we saw a 5% increase in the number of students that are multilingual learners after October.
And I want to, I want to ask a slightly related follow-up question. Councilman Hernandez had asked, he was sort of drawing a distinction in talking about the restoration of funds between things that go directly to student services and positions that don't support students directly. And I just, something that I have sort of learned through this budget process, talking to all of you, is that because our out placements make special ed choices for our kids who are placed out, right? If a kid is, let's say, in choice and they're in West Hartford and they have their PPT over there, and that school says, we think this child needs to go to a private placement. Hartford District doesn't have the resources to be present at all of those meetings to say, actually, we think this can be done differently. And so we have effectively other districts making decisions about how our money gets spent because we don't have the resources to be in those decisions. Is that fair to say?
For open choice. For the majority, we do for magnets, for magnet operators. It is zero to none capacity for open choice systems.
So, and I ask that only to say, that means that there are positions that sort of aren't student-serving positions, but they're still, because we can't fund those positions either, we're losing more money. Right?
Yeah, if an IEP says that, you know, they have to have X service and that is in a staff member, then we comply with it, we get the bill.
Right, that's... My understanding, we're allowed to participate.
Of course.
We don't have the resources to be at all of the...
We don't have capacity.
I'm just making the point that we, front office, central office is not just bloat, right? It does things that come back to us in terms of other costs, and that's also not there. And then another question to follow up on Counselman Hernandez's question about restoring funds to anything that has to go to direct student services, that's just anything that has to go to direct student services this year, right? Like, we're already, what we cut from direct student services last year and the year before, that's, we're never getting, well, not never, but no restoration this year gets us to where we were last year, nor does that get us to where we were the year before. So we're just cutting and cutting and cutting. I just, I'll just add one thing, which is not a question. And I really appreciated what Counselwoman Rosetti said about just how much of this, and all of us, like, it's imposed from without. And it's very frustrating because we give a lot as a city and we do not get a lot. But I also want us, I say to myself and my colleagues, to remember that, like, there's two things, right? There's the state, just terrible as far as this goes, and then there's us. And we've put the same 98 million for the last 11 years. And that is the thing we have control over. That is what this process is, is what we put in. Can we solve this problem on our own? No, we cannot. However, there is money in the budget. I note that no, as far as I can tell, no other city department has been flat funded for 11 straight years. If we had the increases that we've given just to the police in those years, we'd be talking a very different conversation here. So I hope that when we come back here to decide on our budget, we turn our energies not to bemoaning mistreatment from without, which I love to do, don't get me wrong, but that we turn our energies to what can we do right now for the children who have to get through school? Forget about the big restructuring, forget about changing chef and suing somebody. Like, we got kids in school now. And like, I have one child who graduated from Hartford Public Schools, one who's about to graduate from West Hartford Public Schools, and another who's still in Hartford Public Schools. And man, you look at those West Hartford Public Schools, they got more AP classes than they know what to do with. Their problem over there is that the kids don't want to eat lunch so they can do more things. We don't have a school like that. We don't like a band program, the sports programs, all that. That's basic. That's what every child should have. And we have it nowhere in this city. And I just feel like we got to be bending over backwards on our end and also fighting the state for their...
Well, that concludes our meeting. Thank you CFO Caitlin Richards. I have heard great things about the work you've done in the few months that you've been with us. So thank you for, for your service. Thank you, Dr. Rodriguez, for your long tenure with us and the great, amazing work you've done for our children in the city of Hartford. And thank you Chairman, Chairwoman at Hockenhold for jumping into this year and facing these challenges, you know, with the courage that it requires. And thank you to the board members that came today, you know, supporting this conversation and engaging with us in looking and hoping, you know, to find solutions to the needs of our children. So seeing that there are no more questions, I adjourn this meeting. Thank you.